Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to, hang on. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, October 25th, in the Abington Middle High School Auditorium. Please note this was posted in the library. Due to the crowd that ended up showing up, we moved it to the auditorium. It was posted on all doors and on the, excuse me, the library doors. With it being the same address, we were allowed to do that. So, this works out, I think, best for everyone involved, so. To get started, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into the normal part of the meeting, the hearing of visitors, there's, I'm gonna take the first, be the first visitor to speak. Before I open the meeting to comments, I just wanted to state some facts, help try to clear anything up people may be unsure of, try to put anything out there in case anybody's seen things that may be incorrect. Let you know as best as I do the facts that I had, that we have. First, there's nothing on our agenda related to the removal of any school group or club. Our school buildings need to be looked upon as a safe place for all of our students and staff, free from any verbal, emotional, or physical harm for any reason. Every member of this committee, as well as the administration, all strive to do what they feel is best for the students of the Abington Public Schools. At times, there have been and will continue to be disagreements over what that is, and that has to be okay. There is virtually nothing in this world that everyone can agree on. Please keep that in mind as you listen respectfully to what others have to say tonight. There have been many things that have happened over my six years on the school committee that I haven't personally been in full agreement with. However, I know that it's being done or proposed by that individual with the intent that it's what's best for kids in their minds, even if I disagree with it. Being able to work this way is the only way we can function as a group. I ask everyone to please remember this tonight. The agenda item related to a possible vote at a future meeting of the school committee is driven by Massachusetts General Law. It's Chapter 71, Section 50, if anybody wants to look for it. I received a request from the member of the school committee to have the school committee vote on the removal of the book. This book is gay. I feel a sense of obligation that if a member of the committee would like to have something on the agenda, they have as much of a right as the chair to look for, to have a topic discussed. Because the request is for the school committee to vote, the only way that can legally be done is for notice to be provided at a prior meeting tonight, that a vote could potentially take place at any future meeting. That's not to say I will always honor every request, but tonight I did. I hope that helps explain the rationale for this month's agenda item. There will be no vote taking place tonight. Truthfully, it would be my presence, my preference, for the removal of any instructional materials to go through the steps outlined in our policy with file KEC, the Challenge of Educational Materials, as opposed to using a state law. However, to date, there have been no formal complaints made to the superintendent regarding any materials. I know we probably have multiple residents and/or staff, from the looks of it, looking to speak tonight. I wanted to go over our policy of public participation at school committee meetings prior to that. The committee welcomes all residents or staff wishing to be heard. Please note that this is only open for comment to them. Because of this, in addition to asking for your name for our records, as this is a public meeting, I will also need you to state your address. While our policy allows each speaker three minutes, I don't have a stopwatch. However, I ask each speaker to please keep this policy in mind when addressing the committee, and I'll ask you to end it or cut it a little short if I feel it's going on too long. Improper conduct and remarks are not tolerated. Defl amatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If anyone speaking persists in making improper conduct or remarks, I will terminate that individual's privilege to address the committee tonight. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the district's operations and programs as it concerns them, but in public session, which this is, we will not allow any personal complaints of any individual. Lastly, the objective of school committee meetings is to conduct the business of the district. Due to time constraints, I may have to end the hearing of visitors prior to everyone who wishes to speak being able to be heard. If you don't get a chance to speak, please feel free to correspond with the school committee or Superintendent Schaefer via email. Thank you. Anybody else on the committee like to say anything before I open it? Mr. Schaefer, I know you had said you wanted to say something as well, so, before I open it.
So, just before we start this session, and the chair opens this up, I thought I should give people an update on some information. There's been a lot of information out there online and from social media and different sources, so I wanted to do a report out, sort of a status of where we are. Because not everything that's online, this is gonna be, wait, news flash, not everything online is true. Just before our last meeting, I was asked to remove the book, This is Gay, from, This Book is Gay, from the high school library, from the, an area that is shared by the middle high school. At times, that book was in that shared area. Although I only reviewed portions of that book, I removed it. I take my responsibility very seriously, though, so I felt I should read the entire book. I read that book, and although you will hear and you will see portions that are very graphic, the main point of those chapters in full context are really warnings to the reader about safe sex and online behavior. In fact, you need to read the entire book to understand it. There are many cautionary messages in the book. Unfortunately, our students have access to dangerous and disturbing online content 24/7. They all know that the content is there. It is a secret, and believe me, I wish nobody knew it was out there. This book cautions students. It doesn't groom them or make them less safe. I tried to put a review committee together based on the policy that most closely fits the situation. However, there isn't an actual challenge for the book, and probably because that's I initially removed it. So, the policy doesn't fit. There, as I said, there was a short amount of time that the book was in the shared area of the middle high school library, and it shouldn't be there. It's a high school library book. So, the book is back on the high school side. Lastly, and I think we would all agree, that we want to support and we want to defend our LGBTQ community and most especially our students. This whole issue, when it started, was never intended to be about that. I hope, through social media and the political forces, that it hasn't devolved into that. And hopefully, we can follow a process in a way that avoids negativity that tears us all apart. Thank you.
If I can please move on to the next part of the meeting. At this time, I would like, if anybody would like to speak, to please raise your hand to be recognized. Mr. Shannon? If you please state your name and address, and I recognize you're a staff member.
Yes, I am Steve Shannon. I'm the president of the Abington Education Association. I'm a staff member here and a resident of Brockton, Massachusetts. As I just said, I'm Steve Shannon, president of the Abington Education Association, and I will keep my remarks brief. Contrary to what was falsely and erroneously posted online, the AEA's presence here tonight is related to the ongoing negotiations for successor agreements to both our Unit A and Unit B contracts that expired at the end of August. Whereas we are encouraged by the progress of the last few negotiating sessions, I am here on behalf of our membership to, for a swift, fair, and equitable settlement of these agreements. It's been a long three years since we've had an opportunity to address any substantive changes and improvements to our contract language, working conditions, and salaries. Through all of COVID and now into the recovery, educators have gone above and beyond to meet the diverse needs of all of our students in the remote, hybrid, and full in-person learning models of the last three years. Because the educational landscape has changed so dramatically since the language and originally salary, original salary schedules were developed many, many decades ago, our contracts have not kept pace with today's educational realities and demands. This is particularly true for our educational support personnel. Our paras and tutors are truly teaching partners in the classrooms and are no longer relegated to making copies and taking lunch counts. It's time to close that wage gap and recognize the vital work our ESPs are being tasked with. This is why we are here tonight and wearing our t-shirts. We are here to support our negotiating team and to recognize the important role that all of our staff play in the success of the students and our schools. As always, the association remains committed to working with the committee, the administration, and the community to continue to nurture a learning environment that is safe, inclusive, and representative of all students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Alex Haggerty, member of the Board of Selectmen. Can I please ask the staff to take a seat so we can continue with our meeting? Go ahead, Alex.
Thank you, school committee. Alex Haggerty, 515 Summer Street. And in accordance with the Board of Selectmen guidelines and procedures, I need to clarify that I am not speaking here tonight on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. I am speaking on behalf of myself and as an individual. Please bear with me. I am a proud product of the Abington Public Schools, and as an elected leader in the town of Abington, I fully support and endorse the Abington High School GSA, an after-school club with the mission to build a safe and supportive environment for our LGBTQ youth and straight allies. Aimed to foster tolerance, acceptance, support through education. All people, whether you're straight, gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, queer, we all deserve the right to be comfortable in our own skin. I know what it's like to walk the halls of Abington High School and not feel comfortable enough to be me. I saw the bullying, heckling, and stereotyping of what happened to students who were out. Acceptance matters. LGBTQ students need support systems in place where they can seek guidance from people they trust, support from their peers, opportunity to talk freely about how they feel, and most importantly, the knowledge and confidence to be comfortable with who they are. This is how we promote acceptance. As a gay man, promoting books like This Book is Gay does not help the LGBTQ acceptance. The gay rights movement was founded to advance equality, treat people with dignity and respect, and denounce and reject wrongful stereotypes, caricatures, and stigmas. As a gay man, all I want is to be treated equally, like my straight brothers and sisters. I don't need a book to tell me how to be or how I should feel, 'cause I walk that every single day of my life. Books like This Book is Gay that promote explicit sexual language, graphic imagery, and dangerous scenarios does not represent the majority of gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender people. The people, the people who equate my community to these books and saying they should be for children are reattaching the erroneous stereotypes and caricatures and stigmas the gay rights movement fought to get away from. I, I, I am not, I am not and will not be a caricature. And as to quote Leslie Gore, "You don't own me." I do not support censorship. However, sexually charged literature does not belong on display for children's eyes, especially without parental consent. I, I, I don't care, I don't care if the literature is straight, gay, or cartoon. Sexual material that illustrates how to perform sexual acts, promote dangerous apps, and advocate irresponsible behavior is not a book that public schools should be putting into the hands of children. What do these sexually charged books have to do with the LGBTQ community and acceptance? Nothing! But fostering them as LGBTQ people are, by fostering them LGBTQ people, people are reinforcing the negative and untrue stereotypes and stigmas that give homophobia and transphobia life. That must stop. It's hurting my community and the life I must live. Now, please bear me with this. In my younger days, and frankly stupider days.
Excuse me, can we please, if you wish to speak, please wait your turn.
In my younger days, and frankly stupider days, I used the app that is promoted in This Book is Gay. One day, I met someone, and they attempted to rape me. I don't want to have to relive this. I was thankfully strong enough, able to fight back against my attacker, my rapist, to get away physically unharmed, but the mental and emotional harm is still there. Putting like, putting books like these on display are gonna put LGBTQ kids in danger. These books.
Mr. Haggerty, I do have to ask you to try to wrap it up, please.
Could I, could I, there's one part I want to finish then.
Yes.
LGBTQ kids need tolerance and acceptance and our support, not stereotypes, caricatures, and stigmas. If people want to promote tolerance and acceptance, then support and assist the Abington High School GSA with private funding for age-appropriate educational books, speakers, awareness merchandise, guidance tools, and friendly events like perhaps a dance. These areas are where the best good can take place, not books that turn gay people into negative and homophobic and transphobic stereotypes. Books and the fights over them are gonna, will come and go. But the impact, to positively impact a child's life, is what's most important. Please know, I don't talk to you this evening because it's my job or my passion. This is who I am. This is my life. Respect the kids in Abington like me. We need acceptance and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Can I please ask if anybody else would be looking to speak? Man with the red coat. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
I'm not used to microphones, is this alright?
Yeah.
So, my name is Sue McHugh. I live at 30 Elm Street in Abington. With all respect to Alex and his story, I just wanted to share a few thoughts on this. I want to encourage the committee to follow established policy on this book and any other books when issues are raised. Like most libraries, Abington Schools has a selection and reconsideration policy. It details how the professionally certified and trained librarian chooses books and what to do if a community member objects. There's a formal review process in place, and any community member can file a formal challenge. No book should be removed from the library without following this procedure, even if there's a state law that says the school committee can do it. Book challenges are nothing new in this country, but in recent years, most complaints have centered on books about LGBTQ and other marginalized groups. These books reflect the experiences of the most at-risk groups of young people, and critics called them inappropriate, graphic, obscene, disgusting. Having that opinion about a book is a person's choice. Barring access to that book for others is an overreach of personal and parental rights. Having a wide array of books in the school library helps ensure that students see themselves and learn about others. Books build knowledge and empathy. I work with high school students, and I believe that this book and others like it would be a valuable book to many students who are struggling to figure out their identity and their allies. If there is some graphic portion, I feel like the book needs to be taken as a whole, it needs to be read as a whole and judged that way.
Can we please let the speaker finish?
I ask that the school committee and administration continue to ensure access to books from a wide array of subjects and perspectives. I trust that our school librarian uses her professional skills to maintain a collection that is academically and developmentally appropriate for students. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh. Before we continue, and I appreciate the passion on both sides of this argument, this is not a sporting event, can we please keep the chairs, the booze, to yourselves at this point? The idea of this is to hear from visitors, the committee can understand what they have to say, and it moves on. I don't, there is no, there is no right, or there's no winners and losers here. This chairing for everything, can we please end it now? Thank you.
I'd like to speak, please. I feel like we're being ignored.
You're not, I'm recognizing her right now. That's not true. Mr. Haggerty was first, he was running that side. I said, I have recognized the next speaker at the podium right now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christine Simmons. I live at 36 Taxarav. I'm here because I have two children in the school system. I want to start off by saying what I'm about to say sounds profane, and that's because it is. I am saddened and shocked that I'm here tonight to debate whether a book with a how-to guide on handjobs, blowjobs, and dating apps belongs in our kids' school library, a library that is utilized by children under the age of 16, which is the legal age of sexual consent in Massachusetts. This book goes beyond providing educational materials to children. On this image alone, the cartoon describes how to sexually satisfy a man with specific instruction. Regardless of how well-written some of the book may be, it cannot be ignored that this image and many others are within the contents, and it is not appropriate for school. I find it to be a major liability for the town that it is illegal for children who go to school here to perform these acts, but we are providing them with step-by-step instructions in the library. In addition to that, I brought with me tonight the sexual harassment policy and the student handbook. Within here, it states that within, with an example of sexual harassment, is using computer, email, MySpace, Facebook blogs, Twitter, text messages, IMs, to leave sexual messages, graffiti, cartoons, pictures, pornography for other students. Right there in the handbook, it states that disparcing sexually explicit cartoons is considered harassment. Our kids that go to school here would be punished and possibly expelled for distributing this image, but somehow, it's okay for the school to disperse it via library card. In addition, I wanted to draw attention to the missing Bridgewater Rainham 16-year-old, Colleen Weaver, who is believed to be kidnapped by someone she met on the internet. There is no safe way for teens to meet internet strangers, and the school library shouldn't be teaching them how. I don't live under a rock. I am young enough that I went to high school when the internet was widely available. The debate tonight is not around what kids can and can't access on the internet. I really hope our standards have not reached so low that what is on the internet is our threshold for school materials. Pornography should not be in the school because it can be found on the internet. I know students can access this content by other means, but when schools and by de facto parents highlight books like this as being healthy and a good source of information, it lowers children, it lowers children's inhibitions against such things. I find it hard to believe there are no other books out there without obscene content that could not replace this one while teaching the same topics. As a parent, the stance the school has taken on this and the material makes me terrified for what's next down the pipe. And I want to say that coming here today and seeing the separation between the teachers and the parents is also very disheartening and sends a horrible message to our kids.
Thank you for your time.
Beth McDonald, 45 Spruce Street. So, I am here, obviously, to discuss This Book is Gay. Before I start, I want everyone to know that this has nothing to do with being anti-gay against the LGBT community. I know a lot of wonderful gay people in the community, and they are my friends. The problem here, I do not have a problem with most of this book. It is informative and a bit witty, but I do have a problem with one chapter, and that is about the how-tos of having sex. Most will say, "Oh, kids can learn that on the internet." So, that made me think, can kids in this school have access to sex on their school computers? The answer is, no, they can't, because according to the statements parents signed when their child was given the laptop, the school-issued laptop, there was one rule that stood out to me. And that rule is accessing or transmitting materials that are obscene, sexually explicit, or without redeeming educational value are not allowed, though it is subject to disciplinary action against the student. So, my kids can access a book in the school library about, and forgive me, how to give a blowjob, but they are forbidden to look it up on their school computer? How does that make sense? Instructions on giving a blowjob and how to make a man, forgive me, come hard, isn't considered sexually explicit enough? Why can my kids learn how to have anal sex at the school library, but they can't learn life skills like how to budget, write a check, or about paying taxes? These kids can't even learn how to write in cursive, but they can learn how to give a handjob in the school library? Somebody explain that to me.
Again, I'm going to ask if we can limit the chairing after every, ma'am, 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 she's, she's up. That's okay.
My name is Susan Wakeland. I live at 47 Buckboard Lane in Abington. My children have graduated from this school, so I'm not here because I read the book. I haven't read the book. However, I am the proud aunt of two lesbian nieces and a 13-year-old transgender nephew. They were born this way. No book taught them this, but the lady who just smoked, I'd like to thank you for the group of girls in front of me just learned an awful lot about sex, that if they hadn't read this book, and I don't think they did, I actually, eye-opening. Let me tell- don't think they did, I actually, eye-opening, let me tell you. I think parents will see what books the children are bringing home, and parents can decide. Some of these kids need this. I don't know if you know any gay people. I work with plenty. I have them in my family. They're lovely people. I think a book is not going to kill them. I'm sure there's other books in the library that aren't gay or lesbian books that are going to teach these kids the same thing. How many here have read Harlequin Romance? Come on. They get a little bit, you know. But to be honest, you have to believe God made these people this way, and as our children, our goal is to love our children, however they were born. And you should not, you should not take things away from them that are helping them. When I was in school, kids, they were committing suicide if they were gay because they had no place to go. Now, this is 45 years later, and we have all these opportunities for these children to be able to learn things and not learn how to be gay, because I am pretty sure you don't learn how to be gay. I think you were born that way. Okay? And the sex stuff, I think it's a little inappropriate for whoever was just saying that to bring it up in front of, there's young kids here, and they just had an, honest to God.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm not saying they read it.
Excuse me.
But again, I'm sure there's other books up there. Is it just because they're gay books that parents are so up in arms about? Because...
Ms. Wakeland, Mrs. Wakeland, can I please ask you to make all addressments through me and not through the crowd?
Oh, sure. Sure. But anyway, I think, I think the main goal here is to love your children. If you don't want them to read certain books, tell them, "Don't take those books out of the library." Easy peasy. But if you have a child that's struggling, it might be the perfect book for them, and you can read it with them. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wakeland.[731.63][731.63](APPLAUSE). Ms. McHugh, can I please, I'm sorry, ma'am, can I please ask you to remain seated? Thank you. Does that, before we continue, does anybody have anything to discuss, anything besides this book? Okay, so just to be clear, we're, there's two sides, as we've heard, repeated answers on it. This will not go on all night. I'm, sir, if you'd like to speak.[761.13][761.13](APPLAUSE). Please state your name and address.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for the duty that you perform for your community. I know it's difficult to be a public servant. I was a public servant for 41 years in the criminal justice system. I've seen a lot of things in my life. I'm here, my name is Stephen Driscoll. I'm Jamie's dad, but more importantly...
Can you please state your address?
I live in Quincy, Massachusetts, the city of presidents.
I'm going to have to ask you to step away from the podium, sir, this is for...
This is a public meeting, sir.
But for, it's to hear...
This is the First Amendment right, sir.
You're allowed to be here. You're allowed to be here, but our policy states we want to hear from residents.
Your policy doesn't trump the law, sir. This is a First Amendment-protected activity.
I'm, I'm allowing you to...
And a citizen of the United States of America can attend a public meeting in any town.
I'm not stopping, I'm not stopping you from attending.
I have nothing bad to say. Are you stopping me because I'm Jamie's father?
No.
It sounds like you are.
I'm stopping you because you don't live in Abington, and I say...
It doesn't matter. I have six grandchildren in your school system.
And I, I appreciate that, but you don't live here at this moment, and we're looking to hear from...
Are you aware, sir...
Sir, I don't want to have to end public comment.
That the Senate passed a law for sex education in, in the, in the state of Massachusetts? And there is, you have to review it, as I'm sure the superintendent knows, because there are certain criteria...
Sir, I have to make a motion to go to recess.
That this book contains that your sexual education would not allow.[871.42][871.42](APPLAUSE).
Sir, can I please ask you to take a seat?[874.48][874.48](APPLAUSE). Ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rachel Abel. I live at 571 Randolph Street in Abington, Massachusetts. Really quick, thank you for being here, I just have one brief thing to say. We love to throw around these terms like, "This is America," and parental rights, but what about the rights of the parents who are comfortable with this book in our school system?[908.54][908.54](APPLAUSE). What about my rights as a parent with children in the school system? I am comfortable with them having access to this book. And why do your rights to take those books away matter more? I apologize. Why do the rights of the parents who would like this book removed matter more than the rights of the parents who would like to have our children have access to these books? Excuse me!
Excuse me, excuse me!
Excuse me, I'm speaking. I think that's what matters, is that we also have rights.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Abel. At this, oh, God, damn it.[946.13][946.13](APPLAUSE).
At this moment, I'm going to make a motion for recess.
I'll second. All in favor of that motion?
No.
No.
The school committee is now in recess.[973.00][973.00](APPLAUSE). I'm going to call the meeting back to order. At this time, we have about 15 minutes left that I'm going to allow for public comment, and then we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda items, so around 8:10. Would anybody else like to speak at this time? Sir, you're, you're close by, go ahead. Again, I ask you to try to maintain the time that we're going to give as many people as allow the rest of the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time from the board. By introduction, my name is Tom Burke. I live at 254 Presidential Drive in Abington. I'm a parent of former high, high school students here, and since we've been here for 40 years, we've had students and grandchildren in the school system. I currently do have grandchildren in the school system, which has done very well, by the way, thank you. I'm currently a 44-year volunteer with a suicide prevention organization, and I'm in the crisis intervention unit servicing people directly. And when a telephone call or a text comes into the service, either from the new 988 number, from NSPL, or from the direct line, it's going to end up with a service unit, and that'll be my organization, which is the largest in Massachusetts. Those organizations do not have service elements to it. I've also been on the board of trustees over Malden Catholic High School, which is my alma mater, and while there, I was there for 10 years on the board.
Sir, do you mind just, is it able to lift the mic up a little bit? They said they're having trouble hearing you.[1073.83][1073.83](Coughing).
How's that doing better?
I think that's better, yeah.
I've been on the board of trustee, board of trustees of Malden Catholic for a period of 10 years, and in that point in time, I was able to establish with them, with the help of their staff, a suicide prevention program and incorporated into their curriculum for, for the duration, and then we're still there. And the reason I mention this is that, is I expect most in this room, if not all, are familiar with the problem of teen suicide. As a matter of fact, I'm not going to mention many statistics at all, just these two. In the 10- or 20-year-old age element demographic, if you will, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among those young people. Now, within that demographic, a group of LGBT, uh, uh, demographic, if you will, has four times the suicide rate of the general teenage population. Now, one would wonder why that would be so and so different from the other teenagers. And, and what we hear and what we know and from the surveys that have been held, the reason we, we see that result is because they feel terribly isolated and not in a supportive educational environment relative to the issues that they're dealing with. This raises their anxiety, depression, leading to suicidal ideation, and eventually down that, that path. So disparity is one thing, but what do we do about it? How does, how does one approach those issues for that particular group of people who are suffering and, and dying at an alarming rate? As a matter of fact, it would, you would say that if we're here for two hours, over 100 people will have attempted suicide in the United States, and unfortunately, during those two hours, some of those people will die. So we know the seriousness of the problem. So it's serious enough that we should make sure we have a, a helpful and hopeful and supportive environment within the school system. I'm happy to say, in my observation, Abington has done extremely well, both of the programs before, during, and after school for that group of people, for this very delicate and very difficult situation. I should also commend the administration for its work in suicide prevention with the groups it's dealing with, particularly the SOS program that they built with over the years, and, and the group of Riverside Community Care Services in that element. So we're very pleased with the way those things are working. But the problem is that, how do we continue to support these people and continue an excellent program that we have? And my feeling is, and it's a feeling of me, and I can't represent my organization, but what I have seen and what I've found is that if books like this are removed, and I have looked at the book and I've seen it, and there are areas in the book which are uncomfortable for many people, myself included, in certain areas, but I recognize it's the importance for the people who require the information and get the information from a proper and good elemental source, and that's this, this book, which does a pretty good job of that. So I, I'm, I'm in a position where I could not certainly recommend that this book be removed from the program, from, from the library. It would certainly send a message to those people in that group that the, the strong support system they have currently in place is starting to deteriorate and going down that path. So, so with that in mind, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that I just can't support it, and what we don't want to see is, we don't want to see these youngsters start to be going down the path of increased anxiety because of the feelings they may have by removing these, this book and these like it, depression that follows it, suicidal ideation, and of course, what that leads to is a higher suicidal rate within that area. Makes Abington a less safe town. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.[1340.58][1340.58](APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name is Patricia Baldner, 76 East Street. I want to thank the school, school committee and Superintendent Peter Schaefer, and all the school people and the community that have shown up to participate. The school board is servant leaders, anybody in government is. That means that you focus primarily on the growth and well-being of people in your community, which you serve, striving to serve others rather than to accrue power or take control. I just want to say, I think this is very healthy. People don't like censorship, people have opinions, and it's good to get it out there and discuss it. So, what I wanted to say briefly, I want to start out by saying that parents do not co-parent with the government. The role of the parents is to take responsibility for the physical, educational, emotional, spiritual needs of their own children while placing safe boundaries around them. These rights were given by God. The role of government, i.e. the school, is to protect those rights of the sovereign citizen, we the people. Parents have the moral responsibility over their children, particularly in these issues. The court has backed up the Constitution in this in 1997, protects the fundamental rights of parents to direct the care, upbringing, and education of their children, the role of educators to teach civics, science, math, English, classical books, and life skills, and that only. It's the role of the parent to teach their children their values, morals, and principles. The picture that I saw on the Abington News looked to me like it was in the entrance of the school library. This big kiosk, all decorated. Front and center. Alongside that were BLM books, and to me, it's a definite sign of indoctrination and endorsement by the school.[1492.82][1492.82](APPLAUSE). Children then become victims of the cultural environment that is highly suggested to them. I prefer an environment that's healthy and safe from instilling ideologies that are not consistent with family parental values, so that they are not confused but free to learn, to love learning, and to enjoy just being kids. If you think otherwise, let's assume that I want to decorate that kiosk with copies of the Bible. Commentary is on the Bible written by various authors. Sermon is written by the Black Robe Regiment, the pastors, who preached about freedom prior to the Revolutionary War. Dare I say that some people may say, "That's separation of church and state." Just so you know, that's not in the Constitution. What it does say is that Congress makes no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. Having said that, I do hope that you have copies of the Bible and the Constitution in the library. Feel free to put these showcase books on the back shelf along with them.[1572.82][1572.82](APPLAUSE). Eighty percent of Americans don't agree with schools teaching kids about other lifestyles and putting a wedge between parents and children, subverting the role of families. If a particular parent wants to teach another lifestyle at home, they're welcome to do so. However, schools are overstepping their authority and giving to them by the sovereign citizen the parent of their children. CBS show had, Face the Nation show, had a bipartisan focus group on woke culture taking over education. Parents have control over children's education has become the main priority.
Can we please just, please let the speaker finish?
Massachusetts schools are not required to teach sex education. Curriculum must explain the benefits of abstinence. If sex education is offered, curriculum is not required to include instruction on sexual orientation or gender identity. The Senate approved a new sexual health education curriculum standard. The legislation does not mandate comprehensive sex education in all districts, but requires any school that offers the topic to use a curriculum featuring medically accurate, research-backed, and discussions of consent in LGBTQ, inclusive sexual health materials. Parents can opt their children out of these lessons. If this is attached to monies from the federal government, I suggest that we do without the domination from the government. Finally, about the book review board. What was suggested for participants was totally lopsided, with all school people and only one reviewer as a parent. Of course, there could always be a few from school, but most of the review board should be parents, as they are the ones that decide the education of their children. So I think there needs to be a vote, and I do challenge that book and all the other books that were challenged. Thank you.[1706.88][1706.88](APPLAUSE).
So there's been, just to be clear, there's a policy to follow if you like to challenge a book. It's outlined in our policy. There's a, there's a policy outlined if you want to challenge a book, you could, it goes through the super, the challenge, initially gets submitted through the superintendent. It's on our, it's online. I'm going to allow one more. Ma'am in the back. If you could please look to keep it brief, thank you.[1732.03][1732.03](APPLAUSE).
My name is Galen Cuniff. I live at 369 High Street in Abington, and I really wish I didn't have to be up here right now. This is not my wheelhouse. I like peace and harmony and when everybody gets along. But it's really upsetting to me when any group tries to enter our schools and make children feel unwelcome. The things I have heard from parents at the last school committee meeting and tonight are deeply disturbing to me, as they should be to all of us. Nobody has the right to tell any human being whether or not their existence is acceptable or if they are confused. And let's make no mistake, attacks on LGBTQ books and the GSA are doing exactly that. Coordinated efforts like this to erode the rights of any group of students in our schools, particularly marginalized groups, should not and will not be taken lightly. We want better...[1799.53][1799.53](APPLAUSE). We want better. We want better for our children than a school, a town, and a world divided by hate, and it starts here and it starts with us. Thank you.
Thank you. That's going to be the end of public comment for the night. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's comments, opinions offered tonight. We're going to move on with the rest of our agenda at this time. I apologize. It's, that time's over, and I do apologize. I, we can't keep on going. That's fine, thank you very much. And please feel free, as I mentioned, anybody who wishes to still reach out, please feel free to email us. Our emails are all online. Thank you very much. I do apologize if you wish to talk but couldn't at this time. Moving on next, we're looking at reading and approval of records. After you get a chance, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of September 28, 2022, as presented or amended.
Excuse me, we still have a meeting that we need to continue with.
Excuse me, can we please conduct the rest of our meeting? Thank you. I can't keep people here or make people stay or make people come, so we need to conduct the rest of our business that we have to attend to. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda, the report of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, the Art Department update, we're going to pass over that for this meeting. We'll present that at a future meeting. Next item is the new business. So consider this, the notice of the consideration of a change of school books at the November or any future school committee meeting for this book is gay. As I mentioned prior, this could also go through the review committee, being submitted to the superintendent of schools, but this is a notice that this may occur at the next meeting or any meeting here too far after.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How will we figure out which meeting it's going to be?
I'll decide on the agenda.
Thank you. So we all have to read the book, right?
What was that?
We have to read the book?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Joe what that, what the law states, if it comes to us. If it goes through the policy, there's, there's definitely policy laid out about that. I'm not exactly sure, though.
So how can I go through, go back to policy if it's already been brought through by school committee?
Well, it hasn't been. It had, well, once it goes through, it hasn't been brought through the policy. Like, so between now and whenever we were to vote on it?
Yeah.
Somebody can submit the recommendation through the review committee, and it would go through that instead of us having to. And I mean, the policy eventually leads to if somebody's, it does lay out where you can appeal it.
Right, but the whole problem with the review committee was the people that were chosen on it were all part of some, like, I don't know, already, social justice inclusion group?
That wasn't my problem. My role was to pick a member of the school committee, which I did.
In the past, like, I'm just saying, for future, if this were to go through a review committee again, I would hope that it would be more like, I don't know, I don't want to say the word jury, but like, that there's both sides, because the original review committee that was picked was definitely biased. So that's all.
I have to defer to the superintendent for anybody other than the member of the school committee. That's all I'm allowed to choose by policy.
Thank you.
So the policy outlines who participates, and we're a small district. There's only a certain number of people, as outlined by the policy, to pick from that. The spirit of the policy looks for not people from either side, it looks for people that aren't on either side to review the book.
But everyone that was picked was in that group, so, you know, I mean, it has to be someone, I think, that's not in the group, and maybe we have to go outside Abington or do, like, other librarians and school committee, I mean, teachers, I'm not sure, but I think there just has to be, like, you know, I know you picked the review committee, but that's, I already tried to explain to you that the review committee picked just was, you know, it kind of was leaning to one side. And I don't mind who is on the committee as long as, you know, there's an equal amount of, you know, people with all different ideas, I guess, you know? That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
And that's, that's, I'm sorry. That's the purpose, to grab people that are not representative of either side. So I hear what you're saying, that you felt that it was a biased group. That's actually not the intention of the policy, if you read it. It's to stay away from people that are biased. Again, we are a small district, and the people outlined in the policy, you know, I've got to follow the policy as outlined.
Right, but we have 17,000 people in our town, so the people that were picked are biased, were biased, are, so I think that we have to expand that.
Excuse me, can we please leave this discussion between the committee and the superintendent? Thank you.
But we have, you know, two librarians in town. We have only so many administrators at both of these buildings.
Right, but you picked a librarian that was talking about parents on public sites.
We have so, we only have so many people that are on school councils, who are the parents I pick for all of the work that we do. I pick parents off of school councils because those are parents that have been democratically elected by parent groups to represent their interests in schools. It's the best format for me to use absent any other. And those are the people that were on that group.
They were peoples that were still in that group, so, you know, that you picked, so they were biased. So we spent thousands of dollars on anti-bias training, so all I'm asking is that we just pick people that aren't in that group and, you know, we, we just have a bigger array of people. That's it. Thank you.
If, if the process goes that way, I will do my best to put together a representative group, but I have to follow what that policy says.
So how can that, I'm just asking, because I don't know, how can that trump if there was already a, you know, if it was already asked for it to come to school committee for a vote? So how could that trump what is already on the agenda?
If I find that it gets put through the review committee, I won't put it on an agenda to vote, because my preference is that it goes through our policy other than a state law. That would be my preference. If I find out that it gets submitted for review through our policy to remove the materials, I won't have it on an agenda. The notice has been given that it may be on another agenda, but I won't put it on one if I know it's going through our policy already.
But that's what I'm asking, like, how can it, how, if this, they already had the chance, right, to review it? He put it back on?
Who's they?
The review, alright, so it went through the process of an informal process, because that was, there's, part of the policy, it says if there's an, the first thing to do is try to do it amicably between the staff and the person. That was done amicably, it was taken out. Then the second part of the process wasn't followed correctly. Mr. Schaefer put it, a review committee together. So the review committee that was picked wasn't, in my eyes, a fluid committee that would have a good understanding, you know, from both sides. So he had put it back, according to the law, school committee, a member is allowed to bring it to school committee. So I'm wondering, since there isn't anything, you know, that somebody has asked for that second part of the policy, no one's filled out a form, and this is already on, how can it then be voided?
All I did was give a notice that this can be on any future agenda now. So now, the, the state law says I have to provide a notice?
Right.
At a, at a meeting, that this could, that we could vote on the removal of something at any future meeting. I've now given that notice. I will determine at which meeting that'll end up on. It may be November, it may be later. If I find out that it's gone through, that, that, that the submission has been made to the superintendent, I won't put it on one of our agendas. I will let it play through the way our policy works.
But it's already gone through, like, the school committee?
Yes, I've given notice, I've given notice.
Right, so, but then, that, that, the general law, that has to, that says to, you have to bring it to a school committee meeting, and then the next meeting?
No, it doesn't.
Or thereafter?
Correct.
Right? That's, it voters on it.
I said it may.
And I asked you that.
It may, it may.
You know, I asked you that before we even came here. I emailed you and I said, "Can you clarify?"
I said it may be at a few, the next meeting or any future meeting.
In any future meeting, right. And I'm fine with any future meeting, but it still has to be, like, do, like, in, you know, due process.
Correct.
So, and so if there is somebody that fills out that form for the review, I don't know how that would trump what is already on here by state law.
So here's the state law. "A change may be made in the school books used in the public schools by a vote of two-thirds of the whole school committee at a meeting, notice of such intended change having been given at a previous meeting."
Here, right.
So I gave the notice?
Yep.
And a change may be made at a future meeting.
Yeah, but what's the rest of it?
That's it. That's the whole section.
It's, the, the rest of it is, can I see? I'm sorry. I'm like, I don't have it in front of me, so, thank you. So while this section, it says, "Requires two-thirds vote," right? We already know that.
That's commentary from Joe Emerson, our, the school attorney.
Okay, so where are we looking up here?
Where I boxed it in.
Thank you.
That's the, that's the state law.
Yes, so a change may be made using, used in the public schools by a vote of two-thirds. This, this is saying that you, it has to now be gone, it has to now go through the school committee.
No, it doesn't.
Why?
I can verify that with Joe.
Yes, please.
It says a change may be made.
Yes, but that's also, like, his personal opinion, so.
No, no, the change may be made is the state law. What I bracketed on that sheet?
Yeah.
Is this actual state law.
Right, the change may be made by the school committee voting on it.
Right.
Right.
I'll ask him, I'll ask him if it has to go through. That's fine, I can ask him to be sure.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, are we okay to move on to the next topic?
Thank you.
Unfinished business, so the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of Superintendents has an annual joint conference on November 2nd to the 5th in Hyannis. At our last meeting, I think it was, we knew that Wendy, Julie, and Heidi would all be there at, will all be there for the November 2nd vote that the resolutions will take place. Is that correct? Is that right?
Yes, I'll be there for two days.
So I'm looking, we're looking right now for the appointment of a voting delegate. I don't know if you guys have any preference, if anybody wants to let me know they're willing to do it, they want to do it. If it's more than one, we can vote that, we can vote it like we would our reorg meetings and go about it that way. So the, the, whatever, whoever we appoint is tasked with voting whatever we're about to come to agreement with on the resolutions in the next step. They don't get to, nobody gets to do what they want there. They're tasked with answering these resolutions with the way our committee votes in step two of this process. Just to be clear for everybody.
If.
Okay. The vote is on November 2nd at 3:00 PM.
I'm willing to be a delegate.
Yeah, I'm fine with Heidi.
Yep.
Julie is?
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint a voting, to appoint Heidi Hernandez to vote on the 2022 MASC resolutions as informed by the school committee in the next movement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Heidi Hernandez, Teresa, if you need that. So next, we're going to go through the review of the 2022 resolutions. We've had these for two months now. What I'm going to do is I'll read the resolution, and then I'm just going to kind of read the section about, therefore be it resolved, so kind of say what it means. Everybody has this in front of them, it's been in our agenda packet for two months now. So there are six resolutions, we're going to go through each one and vote, I guess is the best way, vote in, is it vote in favor or vote against, right, kind of thing? Okay.
If they vote, if they don't vote in favor of it, they voted against it.
Okay, so the motion will be, the positive motion, okay. So Resolution 1, Regarding Sanctuary Laws for Transgender Students. Therefore be it resolved, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the great and general court to join with other states in the passage of so-called sanctuary laws to ensure such children and their families have the power of enjoying in safety and tranquility their natural rights and the blessings of life as guaranteed by the Constitution of the Commonwealth. I'll be looking for, I'll make the motion in favor of passing Resolution 1.
I'll second.
All in favor of passing Resolution 1?
No.
Aye. Any opposed?
Me.
So four to one. Resolution 2, To Increase the Maximum Balance Allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to amend Chapter 40, Section 13E by deleting 2% of the annual net school spending and by inserting the following, 5% of the, of the annual net school spending. Again, I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 3, Membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation to repeal the provision of Massachusetts law that prohibits practicing educators and sitting school committee members from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. All in favor of this, is, I will, looking for a motion in favor of this resolution? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Me. Yes, I oppose.
Yes, yes. So Resolution 4, Preserving Local Governance of Massachusetts Schools. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to restore local governance and accountability for the Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge Public Schools no later than July 1st, 2023. I'll be looking for a motion in favor of Resolution 4.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Resolution 5, Personal Financial Literacy Education. Therefore be it resolved that the MASC file legislation that would have the effect of ensuring that all students have exposure to personal financial literacy curricula and ultimately graduate from high school with a lifelong knowledge of how to be fiscally responsible to avoid being determined, deterred by financial woes. This legislation should ensure that the students at various levels would benefit for curriculum in Massachusetts public schools, which would include content in personal financial literacy. I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And finally, Resolution 6, establish, which doesn't necessarily affect us directly but in support of, Establishment of a Regional School Assessment Reserve Fund. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to enact or amend legislation which permits municipalities to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund. Lastly, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Resolution 6.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Any opposed? Okay. One abstain, one abstention. Wendy. Up next, the report of the Director of Student Services. James, is it just the homeschool requests that we already have? You don't have to get up then. We all have the additional homeschool requests provided by James. James, I'm going to speak for you, but you can stop me if I'm wrong, that you've gone through all of this and approved these to go through the process to come to us at this point? Okay. I'll be looking for a motion to approve the additional home education programs for this school year as recommended by Dr. Robbins.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to report as superintendent of schools.
So at the end of the last school year, around about March and April, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as you know, provided an audit of the district. They call it a targeted district review report. The, DESI does this periodically. I don't know if it's every hunter's moon or every seven years or when somebody sees their shadow, but they come out and they, they visit school districts and they do a top-down report. We've received our report back, and it's overall positive. It's a good report. That doesn't mean that there aren't things in the report to think about and reflect on as you're thinking about improving the district. That's the purpose of doing audits. And so tonight, I really just want to make everybody aware that it's back. I'm going to hit just a couple of things in it. It's a 70-ish page document. I prob, I promise I won't read it to you, but I just want to hit some, some positives and some recommendations for improvement. So I want to say, though, that just because there's a recommendation for improvement, that doesn't necessarily mean it's something that we're going to jump on right away. We may or we may not. I think that we have a responsibility to hit those things that are most value-added first, or we may locally have a satisfaction with the way we're conducting a certain process. That doesn't mean we wouldn't openly talk about it, doesn't mean that we wouldn't want to continue to improve it, we just don't necessarily need to go the way that the report suggests. That does not mean that we're not going to be following the report, using the report honestly and openly and being thorough and diligent about it. It just means that we don't have to implement everything the way that it's outlined here. I just thought I should, if you dive into it, I thought I should mention that at the outset. So.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
So is this the MCAS, like, is, is this, like, the review that?
So is this, is the MCAS, like, is, is this like the review that, you know, the English department had and the math department had usually come in?
Uh, no.
Okay, thanks.
I think I know what you mean. You're talking, I think the question is, is this the MCAS report? And what we do annually is different department leaders will come in and we will talk about our MCAS results. And we also talk about those openly, the good and the bad of those, and try not to editorialize on those. That's not this. However, MCAS results are, if you go deep into this document, cited for us as a district. And if you've been to any of those presentations by our curriculum leaders, you'll see that what's cited in here is no surprise. The highs and the lows that we've reported out are exactly what DESI reported because a number is a number. So, for example, in the executive summary, it notes that overall teachers have a shared desire for more structured time to analyze and respond to student-level data. Teachers also express a desire to have access to data, a data dashboard to ensure that important data are readily available. The district understands that data usage is an area of need and is working to meet the identified need. So we know data is important. Teachers want more time to look at it, looking for a data dashboard. We have the ability to do that. That's in the works. And what that is, is it's a way for a teacher to pull up on a computer all of the data in terms of the educational data, reading, MCAS, different, different reading diagnostics. And there are, there's, there are those for phonics and decoding so that a, that a teacher can pull that up on their computer and they can see all that information in one place. That does not mean that our teachers are not reviewing those things. They are. It would mean that it would be helpful to them if they had it on a dashboard. So I just wanted to spend, for example, by example, spend a little bit of time explaining that.
Can, can you just give us the page numbers that you're using?
Oh yeah, that was on page two.
Thank you.
So now I'm jumping to page seven. Because this is online, people can see it. They give table summaries for strengths and areas of growth. For example, a strength is through the curricular review process, I'm sorry, a thorough curricular review process and curriculum guides, a robust approach to adjustments to practice. That's the way teachers teach. APS offers a myriad of postgraduate opportunities. Areas for growth, support English learners' access to the curricula. Differentiate supports for English learners of different levels. At another spot in this report, it also acknowledges the work we've done to improve the educational experience for our English learners. So it's very comprehensive and it's all in this document. The last piece that I just wanted to mention, and again, people can spend as much time on this as they wish, strengths under assessment on page 15. Use, we use a variety of assessments and we, the strength is we use a variety of assessments, including screeners, diagnostics, and benchmark assessments. We have regular communication with families. Areas for growth, adopting a former, a formal structured data dive process. We've been using different ways to look at different sets of data in different ways and they're looking for us to formalize that, codify it. So that's a flavor for what's in here. Going through the entire document tonight would be a terrible way for you all to spend your evenings, but we will be doing that as we digest this. But it just got here, so I thought I should at least make note of it. And again, we're going to be reflective about it. And overall, it's a, it's a good, it's a good report. It doesn't mean there aren't things we should work on. So, questions or any other information I can provide?
I don't have any. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent?
Can I just make an observation that I was impressed with the student engagement metrics, particularly at the high school level? Some of what I was seeing was just a testament to a lot of hard work on both sides, what the students were bringing to the plate and what the teachers were providing, so. Well, thank you. I'll take that as a compliment. So, yeah, so great job to everyone who took part in the process because this was a daunting piece of something to read with a cup of coffee. So I know that the work on the other side of preparing and sharing classrooms and students sharing your teachers with people who are doing some pretty tedious processes. We appreciate everything that you kind of allow for us to be able to have this data handed back to us, so thank you.
No, thank you. The faculty and staff and the, and the students we work with are just, you know, really proud of them. It's a good place to be.
Thanks. And if anybody has, anybody on the committee has any questions, obviously, as always, feel free to reach out to Pete or anybody in the public. His email address is out there, trust us. Feel free to email with any questions related to this matter. Up next, report of the Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Michella has a school safety and update on the November 8 professional development Alice training.
Thank you. I wanted to just give you an update on our professional development on November 8, which is a half-day professional development for staff and there's no school for students. So just want to make sure again, I say there's no school for students on November 8. It's also voting day and our staff will be engaged in a half-day professional development. On a refresher of our Alice safety program, you've heard me speak about it at some other meetings. But as you remember, as you may remember, Alice stands for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. And this training empowers individuals to make decisions based on the information that they receive during the incident. This training also doesn't end on November 8 and it doesn't start on November 8. All of our staff have already gone through Alice training or have watched, and/or have watched an Alice video. This is an extension of that. All of our staff will be participating in an online e-learning component and then there'll be presentations provided by the Abington Police Department and the Abington Public Schools. And I would like to thank the Abington Police Department for their partnership in our school safety in general and our Alice training specifically. After, and during the school year, our students and staff participate in Alice drills in each of our buildings. They look different depending on the age level. They could range from an evacuation such as a, as similar to a fire drill or could, and/or at the higher levels could be a tabletop exercise in a classroom around an active shooter in the building, how they would respond depending on where that person is within the building. To, and, so we do those throughout the school year or a few, a couple times during the school year. And are there any questions?
I don't have any. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Michella?
No, not tonight.
Awesome. Thank you, Felicia. Up next, the establishment of our next school committee meeting. It'll be Tuesday, November 29, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Abington Middle High School. Some dates to remember, as Dr. Michella just mentioned. Tuesday, November 8 is no school for students. Half-day of professional development on training for staff. Wednesday, November 9, Abington Education Foundation has their board meeting at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. Thursday, November 10, the National Honor Society induction here in the auditorium at 6:30 PM. Friday, November 11 is Veterans Day. All school offices and buildings are closed. Wednesday, November 23 is the day before Thanksgiving.